The meeting of the Shreveport City Council has not been called to order. We will have an invocation by our Chief Wilton and Councilman Butcher will lead us in the pledge.
May we pray. Father, we give you praise for this day. We thank you for the breath of life. We thank you most for the saving grace of Jesus Christ and for those who would ever call upon his name, he would save and give eternal life. Father, we pray as we go through this meeting, we pray that you would give guidance and wisdom from above. We pray for our elected officials, that you would just help them in decision-making that they do. We pray for the members of the city of Shreveport, working every day, serving our citizens, that you protect them. And Father, we also pray for our city and our citizens, also your blessings and protection upon them. Father, as we go into this holiday weekend, we pray that we would remember those who have laid down their lives for the freedoms that we have here today that we're exercising. And Father, I pray that you would just remember those families because sometimes Memorial Day is tough for them because they reflect on that loss and grief. So we ask that you would give comfort and peace and wrap your love in arms around them. We ask that you forgive us of our sins and where we fail you. And we pray these things in a name that's above all names, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Everyone face the flag, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call a roll, please?
Councilman Brabber. Councilwoman Fulmer.
Present.
Councilman Nicholson.
Present.
Councilman Butcher.
Here.
Councilman Fleury.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
Here. All right. Today I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the administrative conference from April thirteenth and April fourteenth. Does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests at this time?
Mr. Chairman, since Councilman Brabber's not here, I'll make this remark. I just want to congratulate Councilman Fleury and his wife on their fiftieth wedding anniversary. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Councilman Fleury, I think. Mayor Perkins, you have any?
I do. I want to say, I went to speak at the Mudbug Madness earlier today, so I encourage everybody to go out and visit that this weekend. And we acknowledge Mr. Ronnie Hammond, who was a city employee for twenty-five years, but he was integral in developing Mudbug Madness and that relationship between the city and the Mudbug Madness Committee. So just thank him for his service and his legacy is alive and well out there at Mudbug Madness this year, and we're dedicating this year to him. So thank him for that. And secondly, I just like want to, I want to acknowledge our chairman for the award he received on yesterday, named after his mother, Ms. Joyce Bowman, who was a fearless servant for this community. So I just wanted to point that out. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Appreciate you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Councilwoman Fuller.
I do have a guest that just walked in, so can we go back?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to recognize Mr. Marvin Mohammed, please. You can come speak now as my guest.
While he's coming, I'd just like to welcome the newest member of your mission, Mr. John Satter.
He'll come, will he? Boy, I have to run a good set of money, yeah. Be seeing.
Pardon me for a second. They say, despite what Chief Ben Raymond says, that the sagging pants ordinance has been conflated, but leaned towards African-American males. As they approach, they're usually doing what I'm doing now. Setting up tension as they ask a young man to pull up his jeans. And as they stand, standing one flank in the other, usually the young black male becomes nervous. And so, yeah, he's right. They're not necessarily stopping and searching the physical body, but they stopping and searching his mind. Asking them questions when it should be a very simple, "Pull your pants up, young man." The data supports ninety-eight percent in one case and one hundred percent in another that African-American males are the ones that being stopped, are the ones that being summoned, is the ones that being arrested. But let's get one thing straight. The death of Anthony Childs won't be decimated to only the repeal of the sagging pants ordinance. We're going to be calling for the removal of Chief Ben Raymond because he's putting this city at risk. Right now, as I speak, the Shreveport Police Department is under investigation. Right now, as I speak, there are pending indictments pending against officers of the Shreveport Police Department because of their brass brutality against families and members of this, of this great city. He said at two of the previous, Ben Raymond said at two previous community meetings that I was fortunate enough to attend, that he saw this ordinance as a means, as a pretext, as a precursor to approach potential suspects to stop potential crimes. When you compare that and weigh that up in a balance, where only, or the majority of those that is being faced, what is he saying? Is he saying that it is only black males that are sagging their pants? Or they're saying that the black males are not complying? Or is he saying that white males are immediately pulling up their britches? What is he, what is he really, truly saying? What I'm suggesting is that he isn't a man, in my opinion, in my humble opinion, that shouldn't be over this great city. Since his elevation to his post, there have been several police-related shootings. One where a wonderful sister lost her life, and two where two citizens lost theirs. All unfortunate. Mr. Anthony Childs has been butchered by the Shreveport Police Department. He's been styled as a thug. He's been styled as a savage. When in truth, today, Councilman Fuller, and I do thank you for granting me this time as your guest, but today is, is really a day of hypocrisy. Because we pause on Monday, meet today for Memorial Day, but we have a United States veteran, a man who served his country, gave his life for liberties and freedom that we are supposed to have here. And but because he struggled to integrate back into society after he gave his all, and because of his struggles with PTSD, the fine men of the Shreveport Police Department believed that his life was useless. We're going to also be calling for the investigation of the Caddo Parish Coroner's Office. He have stated publicly, and as I conclude, he has stated publicly, particularly at the last community meeting, that the value of a black man to him was, hmm, I really don't even want to repeat it. But he actually said, and then later said, "I didn't really mean that." But we asked him, "Why did you not perform a gunshot residue test?" And he fondled around with his words and suggested that the medical evidence didn't hesitate it. But then he concluded and said, and because of the high cost of the test, he saw it unnecessary. And so when I challenged him and asked him, "How much, what's the test? Or are you saying that the value of a black man is only worth the value of a scientific test to prove what?" She's not here today, I don't believe, but I was speaking with State Senate candidate Debbie Hollis, and I pray that she doesn't mind me sharing this. But she said to us afterwards, she lost her father to a self-inflicted shotgun blast. And she said, "They performed that test despite him being home alone." But yet, the coroner, Dr. Thoman, decided that it wasn't necessary to perform a test to, if you will, to prove that in fact the officer, as they said, as they suggest, was never got closer than twenty to twenty-five feet of Anthony Childs. Why is this important? It is important because gunshot residue only travels three to five feet. And if Anthony Childs didn't have residue on him, or had residue on him, then it could be proven without a shot of a doubt that he did, in fact, take his life. We have in our possession a scholarly report from the Louisiana Law Review, and it's entitled, "A Coroner's System in Crisis: The Scandal and Struggles Plaguing Louisiana Death Investigations." If you email me, I can get you a copy. In this scholarly journal, it is asking for reform of the Louisiana Coroner's Office. We're going to be looking for a bold, brave, and courageous council member who's willing to stand with the citizens of Shreveport to ask for the reform that this scholarly journal asked for ten years ago. In the meantime, we're going to also be looking for someone to call for an investigation of the Coroner's Office and for him to be chuffed with Maffie's in office. Thank you.
Pastor Green.
No. You don't.
Mr. Green, yeah, anyone has anything relative to property standards?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Green, I'm constantly seeing debris and trash always come from all over the streets of this community. Is that part of your responsibility to eradicate that? Who's responsible for that?
That's Public Works.
Public Works?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I address with Public Works.
Okay.
In case of, in case of over extension of Public Works resources, will your department be available to assist?
We'll help anywhere we can.
I address it with Public Works and we'll see how we can work, get this stuff off the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, you're not responsible for nutria rats, are you? Is that beyond the scope of public standards? I got an email this afternoon about nutria rats in the duck pond. They're a perennial problem and apparently they're venturing out of the pond into, into yards, so.
Probably animal control.
Thank you.
All right. There's it.
We're good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green. Let's see, Mr. Clark, on Tuesday, are we required to hold a public hearing on the ordinance on Tuesday?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Ordinance number fifty-eight of twenty nineteen.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
That ordinance, the actual ordinance itself, is up for second reading, and we would like to ask the council to postpone it because we are waiting to get in touch with Millennium Studios representatives so that we can, as a courtesy, let them know about the closure. If the council doesn't object, I understand I spoke with Mr. Thompson, that the public hearing can be held, but then when we get to the ordinance itself, we would like to postpone it for the next meeting.
Okay.
So.
Okay, we'll be ready at that time. And we have, is there any other legislation to be added tomorrow?
Not that we're aware of.
On Tuesday, I'm sorry, for Tuesday. No?
None.
All right. We have the following request to speak, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have several requests to speak. My intention today is to enforce the three-minute time limit absent a motion from a member to extend time. And so if I request that you wrap up your remarks after the expiration of three minutes, please know that I'm just trying to enforce the rules of the council as they are written. It has nothing to do with, with anything you're saying or you individually. So that's my intention today.
I agree. Thank you, sir.
Calvin Lester is the first name I have. This was submitted online. I don't know if Mr. Lester intends to speak today or Tuesday.
We can check back with him and see. I don't see anyone else. We'll wait and see if he comes.
Mr. Freddie Eschola.
I prefer not to give my address. I've upset a lot of people over the last couple of weeks. At least once a week, or like at least once a week, I am either arrested or detained by one of the Shreveport Police Department offices. And not because I've committed a crime, and not because I've threatened anyone, or not because I've harmed anyone, but because I've made somebody uncomfortable. Anthony Childs was murdered because he made somebody uncomfortable. And I say this because the history, as far as I have experienced it with the Shreveport Police Department, is one of accosting and harassing its citizens opposed to having conversations with them. Right? The question that comes up, or rather, the question that should come up, is why was Anthony Childs sagging? Right? Like maybe Anthony Childs couldn't afford a belt. Maybe he couldn't afford to wear the type of clothing that would be considered conformist, right? And the question I have to ask myself is, should a man lose his life for that? For the last year and a half or so, since I've been in and out of jail, I've essentially worn the same clothes day in and day out, intentionally. Right? In my previous life, working as a pastor or working as a businessman, I dressed to fit in with everybody else, wearing the slacks, wearing the coats, the pullovers, all that. I do this intentionally to show that, just as Martin Luther King Jr. said, what is on the inside is far more important than what is on the outside. Right? I want people to respect me because of my mind, because of my values, and because of my character, not because of the clothes that I'm wearing. And to address that further, I had had run-ins with both the Shreveport Police Department as well as the Sheriff's Office when I was serving in those former capacities, and my interactions with them were entirely different than the interactions I have with them now. Right? Just Mother's Day, I was basically kidnapped by the Shreveport Police Department when I was protesting out on Buncombe Road. Right? I asked them repeatedly, "What crime have I committed? Why am I in handcuffs? Why are you detaining me?" No answer was ever given. They then transported me to my mother's home. Again, no answer the entire time. A few days ago, I was outside protesting outside Government Plaza. A police officer, opposed to walking up to me, asking me my name, and asking me, "Freddie, do you mind moving somewhere else?" Immediately accosted me and says, "Freddie, if you don't leave and don't do what I say, I'm going to have you arrested." And of course, I don't leave, I don't do what he says. I'm not arrested, but that's only by God's grace. What I'm asking for is more robust and dynamic conversation from our police officer instead of accosting and abusing us. Thank you.
Mr. Craig Lee.
Craig Lee, eleven-twelve Prospect Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. On this past Tuesday, we had an opportunity to have a second follow-up with the coroner, Dr. Thoma, and Police Chief Raymond, and this time DA James Stewart. And the answers are pretty simple. This is a cover-up that is going on here, and I'm going to read the initial report because obviously the police chief has amnesia or some short-term memory as relates to what he stated and the police department stated the day after. But I definitely want to call for resignation of this interim police chief, as well as Dr. Thoma, although he is in elected position and that doesn't directly deal with the city of Shreveport, but I want that on public record. And the police chief has lied twice here at the city council meeting, and he basically wants to play it on he just forgot that he didn't know whether or not the case was with the coroner or not, but we know he lied. And he's gotten agitated, as has the coroner, because the coroner has also falsified information as it relates to his articulation of this particular case. But on the, on the next day after this, and we're talking about February the sixth, KTBS reported that the officer had had several dealings with Anthony Childs in the past. Now, on Tuesday, Police Chief Raymond said Trevion Brooks had never met Anthony Childs, which we already knew that that was a lie because we had talked to several people in the community, and that was the reason that he was running. And they also stated in this report that police said the officer was trying to stop Childs for questioning on an undisclosed matter. Now, the day after is undisclosed, but now months later, it's sagging pants. Okay? So they had to figure something out that would actually fit because on the day in question, they did not know that Anthony Childs was an honorably discharged veteran. They, they didn't know. They really just thought he was some thug that they were going to be able to pin this on. That's why it took so long. And then the next thing is, when you read this report that KTBS said, Chief Raymond's, they said it right there, there was a gunfighter exchange. That was the initial lie that was told. Now, when they found out that there was only one bullet, there was only one bullet in his gun, his grandmother and those other entities had already confirmed he was only doing this because he had been jumped on. So he had the gun with him. He wasn't using the gun, but he wanted to keep people off of him. But there was only one bullet in the gun! So now you got a problem, because all of a sudden, it's supposed to be a gunfight exchange, but you can't have a gunfight exchange if it's only one bullet. And so now, we got to figure out something that's going to stick. And the thing that's now supposedly going to stick is what? He now killed himself with one bullet. I'm about to close.
Mr. Lee, your time has expired, and I want to do what I said I would do.
Request for additional time, just to conclude.
I'll extend it. I'd like to extend it, if that's okay with you.
Okay, but we're not going to extend our day every day. I understand what you're saying, but we're not going to do it out the whole.
I know. We can vote on it, but I'm.
Yeah, I mean, when people are stealing money from the city of Shreveport, millions of dollars, I think we can extend a few minutes for Anthony Childs.
I mean, the rule is the rule. How much longer?
Just two more minutes. Just two more minutes.
But it's a vote. But the thing is, I'm sorry, just can I have one second to say something real quick? I'm sorry. We wouldn't have this.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what. Go ahead, get the two minutes. That's fine. Take the two minutes. Let's do that.
All right.
Okay, so, in a nutshell, now what has basically happened, now the sagging ordinance has come to light, and I'm glad that Councilwoman Fuller has brought this to, to light because this was a bad bill to begin with, because Chief Raymond also said on Tuesday, this allows for progressive policing. And just like whenever I was talking about Chief Crump, gotta go. And I tell people on Facebook every day, the police cannot stop crime. This is a situation where the citizens have to actually get involved. And I challenge everybody on this city council, where most people believe you can't do anything about the police chief, yes, you can. You can force this dude to now step up and retire, resign, or whatever he needs to do because what has now happened, Queensborough, Moretown, Cooper Road have now become police states. You have the Marshals Department, you have the State Troopers, you have the Police Department and the Sheriff Department over patrolling this particular area. And this is what incites these particular cases. So I suggest that, again, force Raymond to retire, resign, and now come up with somebody who is actually going to set policy that is going to roll in the best interest of the citizens, and yes, the sagging ordinance needs to be eliminated.
Hold on a second. And I'm, again, I think the council as well is sympathetic to what happened with Mr. Childs and the fact that you've had several, two public hearings regarding this situation. But let me ask you, in, in your response, the responses that you received from the, from the individuals, given the fact that nobody has been under oath in speaking about this incident, do you not think that, that would have a bearing on the real facts of this situation?
No, I really don't, because.
You don't?
People lie in oath all the time. So, I mean, what is an oath? As I was telling a young guy today on the phone about the whole sagging ordinance situation, I say, people, you can't legislate morality. You, you can't. I understand the intent of what Calvin Lester and Cedric Glover wanted to do, but that doesn't matter. So I also went on to say, people assume that just because somebody puts on a police uniform or a firefighter uniform, they now take an oath and they're going to do all this righteous stuff. But unfortunately, Willie, that's not what actually happened.
That's not the oath I'm referring to. I'm referring to that if there was a civil trial and these individuals put under oath, there are consequences for lying under oath.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, and I'm saying, so because you, you was in a public forum and they were saying things that you thought was not accurate, I'm saying that I would, I would, I would take less credence in that until now, until these persons are put under oath where consequences would, would be afforded if, if they are lying under oath.
I hate you on the, on the perjury thing, but the, the point is, these are people who are supposed to already have.
I'm not disagreeing with you.
The ethical and moral standing.
No, I understand.
But I agree with you.
I understand.
I agree with you on what you're saying.
So I'm just saying, I'm just saying that I think that this body, as well as the mayor, is going to give all considerations to, to this incident and how it has affected and divided the city. But I'm saying, but in regards to those individuals that have come before. But I'm saying, but in regards to those individuals that have come before you, and expressed their insight and opinion about what their role were in this, I cannot accept it as absolute fact until I know that they have been placed under oath with consequences of their inconsistencies.
I got you. And all I was, again, doing is restating what KTBS reported the day after. And it took them a long time to orchestrate a story, because the initial story was a gunfire exchange. And that's where we're actually finding ourselves.
Well, you know, you and I have experienced at least a half a dozen gun...
True.
...police killings over the last 20 years. And we've seen some of these instances that was, stories was concopetant. So I'm just saying, but once they went into another venue, I mean, it was oftentimes, facts was revealed. Thank you, Craig, I appreciate you, man.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Byron Wolcott.
Good afternoon. My name's Byron Wolcott, reside at 4214 Calderwood Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. I work as a pro wrestler. I've been around the world at least three times, been a lot of places, seen a lot of things. Couple of years ago, my father was dying in Gina, Louisiana, and my brother and I drove down to meet him before he passed. On the way down there, we were stopped, I drive rental cars a lot of places I go, so I was coming in from a pro wrestling match, and was driving to Gina, Louisiana. Was stopped by a police officer, because he had seen me coming down to Gina, to go to this, go to the nursing home several times, and stopped me for being suspicious in his town. I guess not many black people live in Gina. And me and my brother sat on the side of the road for three hours, waiting for a K-9 unit to get there, and go around our car to see, because he thought we were drug trafficking. Just because he hadn't seen a black guy in a rental car, and he suspected us of trafficking drugs, while my father lay 20 minutes down the road dying. And I want to thank you, Councilman Fuller, for, I woke up today and saw on Facebook how you were talking, working on legislation to repeal the sagging law. Thank you for that. I'm sorry. While, when I read that, I started looking up things about the ordinance, and I came across this very unique article, and I'd like to read it for y'all. It says, "Shreveport City Ordinance Says," it's from the KSLA News 12 site, "Shreveport City Ordinance Says It Should Be Unlawful For Any Person To Appear In Public Wearing Pants Below The Waist, Which Exposes The Skin Or Undergarments. Police spokesman Bill Goodwin Says That They Use Common Sense And Discretion When Enforcing The Ordinance. What We Find Is That When We Do Respond To Complaints Like This, Many Times There's Other Tangential Criminal Activities That Officers Become Involved In When Investigating This. But As Far As Officers Going Out And Actively Looking For Individuals Whose Pants Are Not Up To Their Waist, That Doesn't Happen." But apparently, it does, for Anthony Childs, walking down the street, coming from the store. This police officer saw him with his pants sagging, actually, he was wearing shorts and a long shirt. I don't know if he could even tell, because I couldn't tell when he was running in the video, that his pants were sagging or not, because his shirt's super long. But he was able to tell that his pants were sagging, turned his car all the way around in the street, went back up the street to apprehend him, or detain him for sagging. That just doesn't sound believable, and even with the police spokesman just saying in this article that they don't actively patrol that. But now, Chief Raymond wants us to believe that it does.
Excuse me, sir, the speaker's time has expired.
So I'll wrap it up and be done.
Mr. Chairman, I'm really becoming concerned that we are not adhering to policy. Let's do this, let's, instead of extending time, let's see if any council members have any questions for this gentleman, or any other speaker, and let them respond to questions instead of extending time. I think we need to be more prudent in adhering to that time policy, because what's gonna happen, if we do it, for one, we're gonna have to do it for everybody.
I've been saying it all year, so, let's hold up to y'all.
Yes, sir. Councilman Green.
I'd just like to say that, because of the sensitivity of the situation, that since they've come to speak, I just think we ought to just let them speak.
Let me ask you this, then, I want the council to either vote me up or vote me down on this one. How about we just give them all five minutes, and that's it? I agree with that, today, because of the sensitivity.
Yes, sir.
I'll agree with that if anyone else agrees with it, so we don't have to go back and forth with that. I agree with that.
And my reason for saying what I've said, Mr. Chairman, it's sensitive to me, to them, to whoever. I've experienced it where we've stayed here until 10 o'clock at night, to give citizens, concerned people, the opportunity to speak. And I just think we would better serve ourselves if we would just give them the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Chairman.
And I wouldn't have a problem with the five minutes or whatever, but I'll vote for five minutes. And of course, I'm pretty sure that all of them would agree to five minutes, and I just think it's very sensitive that we do this.
Councilman Brown. Mr. Chairman, I've been out there in the audience a long time, a lot of times, okay? Now, my point is, in regards to comments that are to address an agenda item, it is to somehow express to the council members their position in to try to influence or convince the council members to vote on the issue at hand. The issue at hand is, do we or do we not vote to repeal the sagging pant ordinance? I don't think it takes five minutes for us to ascertain our position on that. Expressing, other than just expressing and us voting for this ordinance, there's no other purpose of, or is there another purpose, other than hearing our citizens just elaborate on what they feel is right or wrong? But again, the principle is, do we or do we not vote tomorrow, I mean, Tuesday, to repeal this ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, if my concern is simply consistency, as the vice chairman, I'm charged with keeping time, the council has among its rules a rule that citizens are afforded three minutes to speak, and while I'm well aware of the sensitivity of the matter we are discussing, this council considers many sensitive and important issues just about every time we get together. And so my request is that we have a consistent policy, and that we enforce it as a body.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butts.
I said this last council meeting, I'll say it again, it's the people's house, I want to hear what you have to say. Also want consistency as well. I agree that there's a lot going on about this right now, and there's no better place than for us to discuss it in an open forum. I agree with Councilman Green today, that let's give everybody five minutes, wrap it up in five minutes, no extensions, period. And I think, though, that just because this is, it's important to us all, but maybe down the road, there may be another instance that may come down that may be important to somebody else. So I want us all to keep that in mind, if we grant this five minutes, that this is important to the city, it's important to me, it's important to every councilman up here, but another instance may come up that may not be as important to y'all as it is to some other people. So I want to just make sure that if we grant this today, that we remember this. And I do think that we need to try to keep it at three minutes in all meetings, so, but I will second Reverend Green's motion to extend five minutes, for by speaking on this matter alone, not everything, but the matter that we're talking about, the sagging pants.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah, we're gonna have to vote on this one, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Councilman Fuller.
I'll yield.
So, before we vote, how many other speakers are scheduled to speak on this issue?
Why they doing it, sir? I watch wrestling every Monday and Tuesday, and I just love, I don't want nobody to tell me that nothing about it, but I just watch. Is there any way you can get me?
I have a ring, I have a wrestling ring, you can come around.
Man, I appreciate it.
With body slamming.
I love it.
Yeah.
I need you numb, I promise you.
Councilman, we have three additional speakers, two have requested specifically to speak on the repeal of the sagging pants ordinance, and a third indicates that he wishes to speak concerning the advisability of a citizens review board, which I assume relates, at least in part, to Mr. Childs' death, and so my suggestion is that we do, for all the remaining speakers, what we're gonna do, if that's the vote of the council.
Mr. Chairman, call for the vote.
All right.
The motion? You got the motion?
I made the motion.
Motion is second. Councilman Butts, your second.
Should pass this 4 to 6? 5 to 2, I'm sorry.
4 to 2. 4 to 2.
Okay.
Mr. Wolcott, you have an additional two minutes.
Thank you. Also, in business, there's this term called disparate impact. And disparate impact is when a policy adversely, negatively or adversely affects a person of a protected class, even though the wording of that law or policy appears to be neutral. And that's what this anti-sagging, or that's what the sagging bill, the anti-sagging ordinance of Shreveport, it disparately impacts black men, more so than any other, any other race or ethnicity in the city. So I think y'all should really take that into account, even though it may appear worded neutral, it's really not. Most older people don't sag, most white people don't sag, most young, a lot of the people who do are young black males. And also, when I came in here, usually when I come here, I'm dressed in a suit, and every time I come here, I walk right in, never get stopped. Today, I'm in blue jeans and a t-shirt, and I got stopped, had to empty my pockets, wave, got the LeWan wave, but it's a difference how you're treated by policemen, by people in general, based on just how you look. I'm no different than I was last week and this week, except for now, I have a t-shirt and blue jeans on. So just this bill, this ordinance, is, it really affects us negatively. So thank you.
Ms. Sheriff Smith.
Thank you, Councilman Sarah Smith, 668 Jordan Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. For those of you that don't know me, I've been an attorney in this community for the past 10 years, most of that spent doing criminal defense work. So personally, anecdotally, I can say I have never seen a white person charged with the sagging pants ordinance. I know, looking at Shreveport Police Department statistics, that is not true, but the Shreveport Police Department-owned statistics show that since 2007, black people were charged or arrested for this crime at a rate of over 98% of the total arrests. I don't know if that includes juveniles and adults, but I personally looked at the juvenile court statistics, and can tell you that over the past 10 years, every single one, 100% of the juvenile court cases that involve the sagging pants ordinance involved a young black male. Now, I can't speak personally from that perspective. I can urge you that there are, of course, political reasons to repeal this bill. It would send a strong message to the men that have already spoken, that we hear you, we understand, and we support you. But there's also legal reasons to repeal this bill, constitutional legal reasons. The 14th Amendment of our United States Constitution guarantees everyone certain fundamental rights, and assures that those rights are going to be equally protected to all citizens, regardless of factors like race. There is historical precedent, I've done the research, for a right to one's own appearance, a right to wear what they want to wear. When our founding fathers were arguing the First Amendment, they thought it's silly that we include a right to assembly. Of course we have a right to assembly, that should go without saying. One of them, Congressman Theodore Sedgwick of Massachusetts, even said that if the committee were governed by this principle, we might as well declare that a man has a right to wear his hat the way he wants to. Clearly, our founding fathers understood a constitutional fundamental right to appearance. Chief Justice Rinkwitz in Kelly versus Johnson used that historical precedent to say that we have a liberty interest in personal appearance, and that to deny that interest would be fundamentally inconsistent with the values of privacy, self-identity, autonomy, and personal integrity that the Constitution was designed to protect. So we have a legitimate constitutional interest and a right to our own appearance, and that right, because of the equal protection clause, should be equally afforded to all citizens, regardless of race. That's not happening in Shreveport, Louisiana, at a rate of 98%. This law is disproportionately affecting the black community. And I believe for that reason, it is unconstitutional. It may not be unconstitutional on its face, it doesn't say specifically in the statute that that's who we're targeting, but clearly, that's what's happening. We have two scenarios here. Either A, sagging pants wearers constitute 98% of the people in our community, and then you do have a statute that specifically is targeting, at a rate of 98%, a certain protected class, or you can say to yourself, well, no, it's not true, they're not 98% of the sagging pants wearers in our community, and then you clearly have a disproportionate impact. Either way, the statute is unconstitutional under the 14th Amendment. Now, I've heard people say that it's not about a black-white issue, it's not about a race issue, that this is about decency, and I kind of get that, I understand that. Certain people don't want to look at it, you don't want to see people's pants sagging in public. I don't want to see grown men wearing skinny jeans, but we're not about to regulate that. I brought some illustrations. When this is a joke, and this is a crime, it's not about decency, it's clearly about race. The United States Supreme Court on this issue has also said that while a disproportionate impact isn't proof of intent, or, sorry, isn't determinative intent, it can be used as proof of intent. And that's clearly what we have here. We have a situation where a law is grossly disproportionately affecting a certain class of our citizens, and it needs to be repealed, not just for the personal emotional reasons that have already been stated today, but also because of concrete, legal, factual reasons.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Isn't it true that 59% of our population in Shreveport is African-American?
That is true. Sorry, I was talking to judges, and another reason why it should be repealed.
And 41% is white or other. So wouldn't it make sense that we would have more, I mean, I'm thinking of our city court over there, I mean, would that, I mean, would that be...
Not at a rate of 98%.
Okay, that's what I want to hear.
Ms. Smith, I was telling Councilman Butts this afternoon that a city that makes it illegal for a young man to sag his pants, but allows me to run down Fairfield and Daisy Dukes is doing something wrong. So, not to make light of your remarks, you spoke well, but I really, it's difficult for me to understand what legitimate purpose this legislation serves, given the wide range of clothing and appearances that we permit other types of people in our community to wear.
I agree, and I've done some research, have not found any correlation between sagging pants and gang activity or crime that would be any more closely rated to white t-shirts and crime rates. And certainly, we're not about to consider an ordinance banning white t-shirts citywide, so I don't believe there's a rational basis for this law.
Do you find white beater shirts to be offensive? Do you find white beater shirts to be offensive? That's the no muscle, you know, muscle shirt.
Yes.
The young, my granddaughter, when I wear one, she's a wife.
Offensive may be too harsh of a word. Offensive may be too harsh of a word.
Okay.
You know, personally offending. I don't believe there should be a law against those either.
All right, Councilman Gray.
Yes, I, I just want to say, at the time of this legislation, when we put it together, was a whole different era in our, in, in this generation. Today, it's a totally different generation than what was then. So, whereas at that particular time, there were no noes about it. Everybody wanted it because it was disgraceful. There are people that spoke out or whatever, and I'm not debating, I'm just saying it was a different era. And as we go through, lifetimes change, whereas it possibly was suitable then, today, it possibly is not suitable because of all of what we are going through. And so, I understand the whole prospect. In fact, Councilman Fuller, Councilwoman Fuller can tell you what I said, because she's in this generation. Back at that particular time, I was back then, at this particular time, I'm what you calling, I can call myself this, I'm an old dude. So, we're in a whole different era now. And I said to her that I would support her, because this is a totally different generation. So, I understand the whole ball of wax. And I just appreciate you coming and to explain it. But just know that you're gonna have people, because of personalities, whoever speaks, if they like this person, they gonna say, that person is saying it right. And if they don't like that person, they gonna say, that person don't know what they're talking about. But I was here when the legislation was put into action. And so, I really appreciate you coming and speaking.
Thank you. I appreciate your call.
And I appreciate you, Councilwoman, for calling me to talk to me about it on the other day.
Thank you.
Councilman Broughfield, thank you. Attorney, what's your name again? I'm sorry.
Sarah Smith.
Sarah Smith?
Yes.
Attorney. As an attorney, I just want to ask you a question. I'm gonna speak on this when it, when it comes to legislation, but I want to ask you a question, being an attorney. And Councilman Florrie brought up an issue that I think is relevant to this conversation. The fact that I said when the ordinance was introduced, back in 2007, '08, whenever it was, I wrote an article, and I'm gonna share that article with my, with my colleagues. My, my article stated that sagging pants is not a problem. Sagging pants is a symptom of a bigger problem. When you have a city, and I'm gonna address this, but I wanna, I'm asking you, if you have a city that's 6% African-American, where 6% of that 6% live on or below the poverty level, the jobless rate is double that of the 41% other, black businesses is only receiving 2% of a $17 billion economy, would you, would you say those are contributing factors?
I would disagree that sagging pants are necessarily a symptom of a larger problem.
You would disagree with that statement?
Yes, I'm not necessarily seeing any research to show that people whose pants are sagging are necessarily engaged.
You would not consider being hopeless or despondent as a reaction to, to values? You wouldn't, you wouldn't agree to that? That the values of, of those that are, that are less and feel less, a subculture that feel like they are not treated fairly, they can't find a decent job? You don't think that's, that's a contributing factor?
Oh, I do. And I would certainly agree, if I'm hearing you correctly, that this law is disproportionately impacting those people. And certainly, the solution to that feeling of despondency and despair is not to arrest that person, put them in the city jail at a rate of $30 a day to the taxpayers, give that person a criminal record and a criminal history just because of a fashion choice. I think that only further perpetuates the system of poverty and injustice.
No, no, no. I was, I was on record being an opponent of this, of this ordinance back when it was introduced and passed. I'm still, I'm still in opposition of that, for the very reason you're saying, but I'm saying that we, and I'm gonna share the article, because I said that when it was, when it was passed, it was just to distract from the real issues of the day.
Correct, yes.
And I still think that's, and I still think that's, we can, we can, we can camouflage our, our, our deficiencies and our lack of attention to real issues by creating some, 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 some phony distraction that will change the narrative. But, but I appreciate you. I, I just wanted to ask you that, because, I mean, you seem, you know, attorney, and you're very smart. But, but I will address this with my councilman at the proper time.
Thank you, yes, sir. Agree completely, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith. Tabitha Taylor.
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, staff. My name is Tabitha Taylor, 5714 Woodbridge Drive. I'm the parent of a Sager. My son is a Sager. And my son is a Sager not because he does not have home training. My son is a Sager because he has autism, and he does not like to wear belts. So, sometimes when he wears his pants, and because he likes to run back and forth, then you may see the top of his clean underwear. And I constantly, constantly pull those pants up, but I've also gone to the mechanism of buying jersey shorts. And I buy jersey shorts with the string to prevent that. Why? Because one day, when we approached our school campus, and Dominique's pants were hanging down, because he likes to run back and forth, and if you know anything about autism, then sometimes our kids like to run. That's just what they like to do. And so, his pants were hanging, and then an administrator approached him. And then he was upset with Dominique, because Dominique was non-compliant. Dominique was non-compliant, because Dominique is non-verbal. So, I'm in support of your repeal, Councilwoman Fuller, because of that method, because of that mechanism for those that may be non-compliant, that have a disability, that have texture issues, that may not like to wear belts, because they feel restricted in that sense, because they don't like to feel that on their skin. Now, I know this may not be the general consensus of everyone, but that's my story, and that is my son. And I'm a mom whose son is a Sager. And we constantly, constantly pull. So, in lieu of seeing everything with Anthony Childs, and knowing that that was one of the issues that was there, that really, really bothered me, because my son can be non-compliant when he's approached by authority, because he's non-verbal, and because autism doesn't have any physical characteristics where you can look up in their face and say, oh, this person has autism. You won't know that, because he's a six-foot-tall, 220-pound, black young man that is good-looking as all our doors, but he can't speak back and forth to you. In 2007, 2008, there was a situation that happened here in the city with SPD, that's gonna lead me to this point in speaking, and Anthony Childs, well, but I'm speaking from the mental health component, that that was an undercover operation, and when the police raided this home, they approached a gentleman there, and that gentleman was non-compliant, and he was beaten. It was a very tragic situation. And at that time, Councilman Bowman, your mom was the Public Safety Chairman, and we met with Councilman Joe Shine, Chief Ryan Crawford at that time. And one of the things that I talked about was a unified database. And in speaking with that unified database, that I called on Captain Cardell Williams, Captain Dunn Gibbs, Lieutenant Bill Gooden, who is now retired, I think Charlie Marshall, and Dr. Bocconi from LSU, and Louis Johnson, who was with the Shreveport Fire Department, that families could come, and that if their families had, if they had anyone in their family that had a mental illness, if they had anybody in their family that had a disability, that they could complete a form, and then that would be entered into the 911 system, and that we could connect all of those systems. So, if someone called from that house before, police, fire, or whomever it was, whatever first responder approached that house, they would know someone was in there with autism, if they were blind, they would know how to approach it. In lieu of what has happened to Mr. Childs, and that he suffered from PTSD, I think it warrants the conversation again. I would like to sit down and talk about it, because I'd like for us to take those proactive steps. And again, I've talked to all of those first responders again, but I think it's something that we need to look at. Y'all have a safe night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Butcher?
One thing, just from my years that I worked in the Shreveport Fire Department and the Communications Division for, I don't know, six or seven years, and I was on the NAMM board, the capacity is there for them to put that in the CAD system, where if there is something wrong, and it's in there, I believe, in several, I just think it's gonna take the family member calling and letting them know that this person may have some type of disability, whether it be mental or whatever. And then that gives the officers and the, and the firefighters notice whenever they're pulling up. So, I think that's an excellent idea, and I think that maybe that might be something that the administration could, could help with, as far as a press release, that, you know, if you have someone that has a mental disability or some type of illness that might make them seem to be aggressive when they're really not, if they could call and get that put into the CAD system, where the officers and firefighters know that.
Yes, because I think it happened with the Sheriff's Department, I am aware of that. I think it's also with the state of the league. We didn't have it on our end for the city, but I think we needed a very good opportunity. And as you said, it's the same thing with my idea, that we could take it out and put it out to the families.
Right. I think, I think a lot of, I think a lot of what goes on in, in Shreveport today is a lack of education, not, not, not book education, educational programs that are available to people. And I think that it's a good idea to, to put that out there, because it's a simple phone call to whoever the communications, whoever puts that in the database now, they can put it in there. I know whenever I was a fire chief, we would have, patient is wheelchair-bound, key is located here, and it would send it to the CAD system or to the pager. So, it's a simple five-minute phone call that, that I think could, could possibly help officers have a little bit more data before they pull up on somebody. So, thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Ms. Taylor, this wasn't a racial issue at that time, though, am I, am I accurate?
It was not.
Okay.
It was, it was not. It was so traumatic, because you think, in my simple mind, that if you're doing undercover work, and you know who's in the house, but the young man was beaten severely, and of course, the officer felt horrible after the murder. But if you have somebody that's non, you know, that's non-verbal, you know, see it's nothing physical to say, you know, that I have a disability, then just think you're not responding.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Danny Martin.
Hmm, Danny Martin, Shreveport, Louisiana. Not giving my address. Let's see.
Excuse me, Mr. Martin.
Yes, ma'am.
Step just a little bit away from the microphone, so the quality will be better. There you go.
Yeah, 'cause my voice is deep. July 24, 2009, was the first time I attended a city council meeting. July 24, 2009. Joyce Bowman was the person that walked up to me and said, "Son, whatever you do, you give them hell." She said that. Joyce Bowman took me in for six years, raised me, groomed me, taught me how to stand up for myself, present myself. Right now, I, I, I'm thinking back to July 24, 2009, to now, and every year, every year since then, I've seen the same pattern with the Shreveport City Council. With every elected official, it's so much disrespect towards citizens, and the fact that we're the people that voted you guys in. You work for us. Like, how many years are we just gonna sit back and allow our employees to disrespect us? I mean, since 2009, and Joyce said those words to me, that's what I live by. I give people hell. And I mean the utmost disrespect when I say that. I, I'm not gonna say I don't mean any disrespect, because I'll be lying. No, I mean all disrespect, because you guys work for us. We voted you in. You solicited our votes, you came out, shook our hands, kissed our children, hugged our dogs, putting signs in the yard, sending our emails, fakes, phone calls, everything. Came to our churches, came to our schools, and yet, you disrespect us like you guys are actually important enough to belittle us and say, we don't need you guys no more. And this is how it's looking as a citizen. I mean, if you don't want your position, step down. This job requires patience. And if you don't have the patience to listen to us, we don't need you. We don't need your service. We thank you for your time, but we don't need your service. And in so many years, I've been sitting back watching, and every day, I've grown angry at our city council, because I'm gonna soon be running for city council, and I'm gonna make sure I have patience, and I have time to listen to the people of Shreveport, because every day, myself along with many others, we fight for everything in this city. We do the jobs that you guys are required to do, but we know you guys can't be anywhere, anywhere, so we just do the jobs for you. But when it comes to these meetings, and we want to have our voices heard, at least have some sympathy, at least have some type of compassion for the people that voted you in, 'cause like I say, we voted you guys in, you work for us. You work for us. Since when did city council members became superseding older people that employed them? I'm, I'm tired of it, I'm frustrated, I'm 35 years old. And like I said, 2009, it's been the same pattern. Joyce Bowman, Jerry, you know, your mom told me, give them hell every time you step in front of this microphone. Give them hell. And I'm gonna continue giving you guys hell, because this is my passion, my city is my passion. And I refuse to let people that I voted in talk to people, these, these citizens, as you guys say, your constituents, but these citizens of Shreveport disrespect them in a manner that you are superior than us. But after your term is over, guess what? You're citizens again. I don't need five minutes, but just know, if the disrespect continues, I'm gonna move everybody that I can to get you stepped down, voted out, whatever we have to do, 'cause I'm tired of being disrespected by people that work for us. Thank you.
Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin, Mr. Martin. Explain to me, who disrespected who? Explain that to me.
It's been happening since...
No, no, explain to me today, who respected our people?
Well, all right, let's see. Jerry, niggas are interrupting people because of the time. Okay, we understand, you have to have order in a leader like this, but at the same time, we have concerned citizens. Okay? You're dealing with a blank issue. This is the most pressing issue right now in the city of Shreveport. Black issues are crucial in Shreveport, because, like I say, we voted some of you guys in. Like, listen to us. We're telling you guys how to better your job, make it easier for you. And all you gotta do is just pass an ordinance, a resolution, get it renewed, re-entified, whatever you have to do, just get something done and just do it. Jerry, patience. I mean, you sitting up there, you're frustrated. I love you to death, but at the same time, your patience. You know Joyce, if she was here right now, she would say, "Look, you better listen to these people, 'cause at the end of the day, that's all you got." Like, this is, this is crucial right now. Anthony Childs is, is more than just a topic. He was somebody's son, he was somebody's grandson, he was, he was a father. So, this is a crucial topic. That's why people are serious. This is why mothers and grandmothers and sisters came up here crying. They cried their heart out. And yet, city council, they sit back with stone face, like it don't even care. Like, since when did compassion for a person get cut down to such a time limit, to where you can't even have a sympathy? Just have some type of decency of your character. Forget about your position, because right now, you're just a title. And after four years, that's gone. But any other questions?
I hate that you feel that I'm frustrated behind that, 'cause that's definitely not the reason. I mean, I want to... I mean, I want to say that. I'm frustrated, number one, because this is the week of my mom's death. So I'm frustrated because, no, 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 that's, that's it. So it's not because of this issue. I promise you, it's not because of that. I give anybody time. I try to give time. I, I got to go along with six other people up here. So I try to stay in line with what the ordinance says is three minutes. So I push that over to John to do, and he can't do what he's supposed to do. And so we try to align and go and vote to extend time. That's the way, that's the, that's the way it's supposed to go. That's, that's not, that's not a Jerry Bowman rule, that's not a John Nicholson rule, that's the way it's supposed to go. So I'm not frustrated behind it. We can sit here, I have nothing else to do today.
But just pay attention to what you just said. It's on record now that you're frustrated behind.
I'm frustrated behind something else. So the look that you're looking at, I mean, I know you're not a mind reader, so the look that you're looking at is something totally different. I, I hate that you felt that way, and I apologize if I made you feel that way and anyone else. But that is not.
It's just how people feel.
No one else said that but you, so I'm speaking to you right now.
Well, I'm saying it for everybody else.
Okay. I agree with you.
Yeah, they just didn't want to use their time. So I'm using my time to let the City Council know, hey, I understand, it's getting close to your mom's passing.
Which has nothing to do with no one up here. That's why I had no words to say, sir. So again, I apologize to anyone if I made you feel any kind of way.
It's not just me, Jerry.
I said to anyone, I'm not speaking to you, and I'm speaking to the public.
But at the same time, it's not just me, it's everybody. Everybody is frustrated with dealing with City Council telling us how we should feel, how we should think, how we should come in here and have people that we employ tell us what they want us to do. Like, we are you guys' employers. We should tell you guys what, we are your constituents.
Okay.
But thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
I got Councilman Green on the table. I knocked him off the floor.
I appreciate what you're saying, I feel your pain. What, what district would you be running in?
Your district.
Have I been disrespectful to you? I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah, the only reason I didn't run this time because my daughter was born, so.
No, I'm just saying, was I disrespectful to you?
Oh, no, sir.
Okay, and that's, that's good.
No, sir. You just got to show it to these means that we have in the community that's in your district.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, as you and our colleagues know, one of my responsibilities as the Vice Chairman of the Council is to keep time on public comments. So in my view, the rules we have governing the duration of public comments are reasonable, and some reasonable limitation on the duration of comments from the member of public is necessary for the Council to conduct orderly business. If any member of the Council thinks those rules need to be changed, he or she is free to propose an amendment to our rules. But until, but until that time, until that time, and for as long as I serve as your Vice Chairman, I will enforce the rules of the Council as they are written. And, and my doing that has nothing to do with any individual who comes before the Council or anything that they have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Is anyone else to speak, sir? Is that it? Anyone else to speak?
I'm, I'm sorry. Mr. John Settle, I believe, had a slip, and Mr. Mohammed spoke once, but I.
I was here as a guest, but I also had a slip. Is it going to be a problem? I was here as a guest, but I also.
No, sir. We just make it short. No, sir.
We're going to let Mr. Settle speak next.
I, I started and ended.
I'm pleased for you to do so today, sir, but Mr. Settle now, if you would please, you'll yield. Okay, Mr. Mohammed, you may conclude the public comments.
Mark Mohammed, 2808 Plum Street. Hershey D. Wilson, I'm sorry, it was Plum before legislation was passed to turn it into, into former Commissioner Hershey D. Wilson. I want to begin my comment with Willie Bradford's words. This was on, this was posted on social media today. This is the disrespect that Danny Mitchell, that Danny, that Danny is speaking of, speaking of, Martin is speaking of. This was on a, this was posted on a video thread of the real news behind the news, Robert Thomas. He says, "I'm puzzled as to why people feel that it's the job of black elected officials to solve all the ears and problems of the black community, and why they feel it's not the citizen responsibility to be involved in addressing and solving the problems of the community." I save him the abashment of the rest of what he said. The simple response to that is that you signed up for the job. You don't have, you don't have the right to, to, to speak into this expectation of the citizen. But what's puzzling about this, and, and, and he know, and he doesn't like me, but that's okay. I'm about to expose him and State's Senator, I mean, State Senator Greg Tarver for their conspiracy against me back in 2014. I have the court records that we're going to be posting when y'all, when y'all got together and filed those fa- false charges against me. But we'll go there later. But I, my card was for public comments, and this is why. In 2013 and 2014, Councilman Bradford, good friend, buddy and pal, Joe Shine, used to extend him over and over and over and over again. I watched him as he came down here repeatedly speaking against former Cedric Glover's revenue bond proposals for streets and drainage, capital improvements, over and over again. At one particular meeting, he spoke 12 minutes. He was extended three times, but yet, he get on the council and all of a sudden, it's three minutes for everyone. Hypocrisy at its finest. I posted, I posted those, that YouTube video on my page if everybody, if anybody want to hear him cry, literally lament to Councilman Shine begging for, for, for an extension of time, seeking it. This council, Mr. Mayor, this council is your problem. Ordinance 27 was, was indeed racial. It's sad that a councilman can pose the question and see that, well, if 60% of African-Americans make up the city of Shreveport, where surely, it would be a disproportionate number of black citizens being approached or accosted over sagging pants. Yeah, 98%, but yet, he doesn't see where we are 60% of the, of the citizenry, but yet, we don't deserve a larger portion of economic development and contracted procurement opportunities. Think over there for a minute. See, this is the, this is the problem. So we're going to be looking for somebody bold, brave, and courageous enough, and we pray that it's Councilwoman Fuller because, from my understanding, the vote to, to, to change. The public comment session was done by this council. I wish I would have been here. I was in, at that time, I was living in Dallas, Texas, and I just moved back. So just so that everybody knows, I'll be here every work session, I'll be here every Tuesday, and the people will be represented. And no, and it is no longer business as usual. As I close, because I know I won't be extended, not, not a second. Not a second. To jumble all of the public comments in the beginning of the meeting, whether it's on the agenda, against the agenda, is counterproductive to good governance. So now, can you imagine having a family discussion as a, as a husband, as a wife, and the children in the back room, and after you discuss it, you call them in to bring them in? You had already made your decision. So to have, so to have us now, oh, we're going to speak on this, we want to speak on this, is it on the agenda? And then, six items down on the agenda, you, the council now deals with it. You're not even thinking about what the people say, Councilman Bradford.
Mr., sir, your time is expired.
That's a disrespect. Thank you, thank you, Councilman Nick, and thank you for that one minute on last week.
Ms. Caitlin Douglas, please.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Douglas. I yield for providing my address, but I stay in District F. I'm your next-door neighbor. Literally, your next-door neighbor, Mr. Green. So I am 24, and I am from Shreveport, born and raised. I've lived in District F on Broadway, which is one of the more higher-volume areas, well, at least from what I see most of my life, where police are always there. My neighbors across the street from me have literally had their home bat around about three times, and they sag. But on the other side of that, I work in Public Relations, and I work with a lot of artists, and a lot of them are rappers, and they're the sweetest people you will ever meet, and they sag. And I have friends who are attorneys and friends who work in the public sector and outside of work uniforms and outside of suiting and all of those things, they sag. And this ordinance is off-putting in the fact that, as a younger person who, who literally deals with people my age every day who don't vote and who don't feel like they have a voice and who don't feel like they're represented, it is very discouraging to listen to how the City Council responds to the citizens' comments. And, and it's very discouraging to know that I don't have anybody representing me. I do thank you, Levett, for representing me, and I think it's important that we understand imagery and how representation is important. If a, for instance, a child, a young black child can look at Princess Diana from Princess and the Far Out, for instance, and say, "Mommy, oh my gosh, she looks like me," that should let you know how important imagery is and how important the message that you're sending to young black boys is. I have literally seen, and I know I have three minutes left, and I'm going to try to get to my point, but I've literally seen five-year-old black boys talk about gun violence and talk about how they dress and their favorite rapper, and Barack Obama, Michelle Obama, and all of these different things, and they're always watching. And just like children watch us, we should be cognizant that adults are watching each other all the time. And if you are not creating an environment to the effect of what you said earlier, Mr. Bradford, if, to answer your question or to counter what you said, is it not the environment that should be conducive to growth and not the way the person dresses that should be representative of what they are actually capable of? You've literally had somebody who's a pastor or previous pastor, somebody who's a wrestler, and they literally just told you that they were profiled because of the way that they dressed. I have had trouble since I graduated from Northwestern State, Fort Candinas, in 2017, shame to spud, in 2017, getting a job because of my natural hair. And I chose to work for myself, and it, that, those things drove me to that.
What did you say about your natural hair? Say it again.
I said, I said that I've been racially profiled because of my natural hair, and it's been difficult to find a job because of my natural hair. And in the same way that people judge me because of my natural hair, I, I don't think that it's fair for us to be literally making legislation and putting it in place to legally discriminate against somebody because of the way that they dress. I don't like seeing people in khakis and spares, but I see it every day. I just don't. It's tacky. Sorry, no offense, but shoe fits weird. But to lighten the mood, I just want everybody to understand that you were voted here for a reason, and, and I hate that you guys feel offended by that, but as somebody who's young and my first local election is when I voted in this last election, and it was a big deal, and it took a lot of courage for me to do that, and had I not had friends like Ms. Omar Hossein and, and people to look up to like Ms. Levett Fuller, I would not have voted because if I would have just came to a City Council meeting and just heard the things that I've heard today, it would have put me off, and it would have made me feel like I don't have a voice. And a lot of the young black constituents in Shreveport, Louisiana, and Bossier as well, feel like they don't have a voice because of the very ideologies that you have. Mentioning a wife beater as, as a point of reference, when that is stereotypically discriminatory in nature. That a wife beater, even the language around it is discriminatory in nature. So I will, I will challenge you guys to be more cognizant and aware of the verbiage and the vocabulary that you are using, and be aware that the young black community of Shreveport wants to get involved, but you have to make an environment conducive for them to want to get involved. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, those are all the requests to speak.
We have the following executive appointments to be considered on Tuesday. The Historical Preservation Commission, Jasmine Jernigan, three-year term, Dr. Frederick Washington.
Mr. Chairman, before, I'm sorry, I didn't know you moved on on the agenda. Can I, can I speak on something really quick pertaining to the comments we just heard?
Yes, sir.
And this won't take long. So on Friday of next week at 2:00 PM, for those of you that were, that are interested in the Citizens Review Board, and I already reached out to Pastor Mays as well, so everybody that's associated with him should know, myself and State Representative Sam Jenkins will be listening to our citizens' thoughts on how exactly they would want it and how we can implement it. Your thoughts and comments have not gone undeaf for years, so let's work together to make sure we get what we want out of our community. Thank you. Here at Government Plaza, in the large conference room, second floor, Mayor's office. Next Friday at 2:00 PM. And I'll reiterate that at the council meeting next week, next week as well.
Okay.
The Historical Preservation Commission, Jasmine Jernigan for a three-year term, Dr. Frederick Washington for a three-year term, and Dr. Cheryl White for a three-year term. There are no items on the consent agenda to be introduced. Ms. Jones, could you please proceed to regular agenda legislation?
Resolution 59 is to recognize Ralph D. Valentine and to dedicate the 3,400 and 3,500 blocks of Mansville Road for his commitment and contributions to the city of Shreveport. Resolution 61 authorizing the Shreveport Airport Authority to execute a permanent right-of-way and easement with Southwestern Electric Power Company. Resolution 62 adopting the system survey and compliance questionnaire required by the Legislative Auditor's Office of the State of Louisiana. Resolution 63 is authorizing the mayor to accept a monetary donation of $20,000 from Brickshire Grocery Company to the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, to be utilized by the Shreveport Police Department and the Shreveport Fire Department. Resolution 64 selecting the Times as the official journal for the city of Shreveport for the period commencing July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Resolution 65 approving the budget for the Caddo Shreveport Sales and Use Tax Commission for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019. Resolution 66 is recognizing May 22, 2019 as National Maritime Day and to encourage citizens of Shreveport to celebrate this observance.
There's no discussion on that. Ms. Jones, would you please proceed with introduction of resolutions, please?
Resolution 67 is authorizing the mayor to enter into a donation agreement with Caddo Parish Fire District Number Three for 10 used Scott Safety Air Packs. Resolution 68 amending the fee schedule for the Emergency Medical Services Division of the Shreveport Fire Department.
68. Okay. Any discussion on that?
68 is the, is what we talked about in the Police Safety Committee. Correct, Chief? Okay, thank you.
All right, Ms. Jones, introduction of ordinances?
Ordinance 65 amending the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance 66 amending various articles and sections of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, Unified Development Code. Ordinance 67 to revise Chapter Two, Article Eight, Division Two of Section 2-421 of the City of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordances relative to onsite certification visits for Fair Share Program participants. Ordinance 68 is amending Article Four of the Code of Ordenses concerning fireworks. Ordinance 69 amending Section 90-306 of the Code of Ordenses relative to reserved parking spaces for the handicapped. Ordinance Seven amending Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordenses by repealing Section 50-167 50-167 relative to wearing of pants below the waist in public. Ordinance 71, amending and reenacting certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances city of Shreveport, Louisiana relative to utilities.
All right. Councilman Bradford?
Yeah, Ms. Chairman, thank you, and I was gonna reserve my remarks to the end, but I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to leave when I finish. But I just wanna say briefly, Mr. Chairman, while I'm gonna support the repeal of ordinance seven, 70, I do wanna say that, and I said this on previous councils, well, at this council, I'm an issue-oriented councilman. I, I, I take up issues and then I advocate for those issues. And my number-one issue for the last five years is the like of economic involvement, inclusion of black businesses in the mainstream economy of Shreveport. And I said earlier that I think that, as a result of that, of the fact that, and it's recorded that 56% of our people, the citizens of Shreveport, live on or below the poverty level, as of all people, but if we took out our white citizens and we said, okay, what percentage of African-American community would be living on or below the poverty level? And you would know certainly that that percentage will be in the 60% range. There was no question. The challenge for this council over the next three years and seven months is going to have to understand that our issues is not gonna always be black and white issues. There will be gray issues as well. We can't deny, we cannot deny reports, when, when most of the, well, I said for James Green, were you, was teenagers, studies and reports was done in the city of Shreveport. So, you, 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 see, everybody else is, everybody else is, is, is in their forties. Reports and studies were done. For example, warning us, warning us of, if we did not address certain issues, the disparities in which we exist in Shreveport will continue to, to grow. The Mount Armory Report, the Time to Choose Report, this report by a Rational Commission Report, all warn us of the actions that we need to take as a city to avoid what we are experiencing here today. Mr. Mayor, there was years of the black community expecting one day that we would have a black mayor and four blacks on the city council. That, they felt that once that happens, the economic and the quality of life conditions of the black communities would get better. They, they, that, that expectation has been out here a long time. Now, when I say this, and I'm not going to elaborate on it, but I'm gonna say this for the benefit of everybody out here, and the fact that the issues that we are talking about today is an important issue, but I don't view it as the most important issue. Rescinding the, the, the sagging pants policy was never on my agenda until the council lady calling and asking me my views on it. Again, issue-oriented person on my job and my home and every aspect of my life, everything I do, I do with a purpose. I got a call, and I'm just gonna say this for the reference, no disrespect to nobody, no disrespect to the council lady, no respect to you, Mr. Council, Mr. Mayor. I got a call from a very trusted friend of mine who happens to be white. He said, Willie Bradford, he said, Willie Bradford, now, you've been talking, all this talk about what's gonna happen when we have a majority African-American council and a black mayor. And the first major resolution ordinance that you guys offer is to rescind a sagging The issues of the Shreveport and the disparity of Shreveport gonna have to be addressed. It's gonna have to be addressed. But I'm saying that, that, that this, this legislation is already buzzing up social media in a lot of different ways. I, I respect and I appreciate the council lady for, for her stand, and she's been getting a lot of different, different responses, but she has thought this through, and she feels very strongly about her position. But I'm saying again, that we cannot move forward, nor can we be a viable city if we don't address the issues of economic disparity that I think are contributing factors in creating this subculture. Because everybody who got there to speak today, you know that they weren't sagging, they weren't sagging, they wasn't sagging, unfortunately. And I just believe that if, and the young lady, and I appreciate her statement, she was honest about her, her, her hair and being profiled, but, but, but how many young African-Americans who just graduated from high school who gonna be in the job market, who go into a employer trying to get a job in their pants below their butt? How many would get a job for, in, in that respect? Issues are important, they're not funny issues. My history, I got a T-shirt and a hat to go with every issue that has come before this council. The guy's right. Mohammed is right. I don't respect him. Because he's not a voter, nor is he a taxpaying citizen. But my point is not that. My point is that we have to focus on the, the, the real issues of the day. And we're saying that the issue, and I spoke at the, at the first hearing at Winfield Funeral Home, we said, what will be some solutions, that this doesn't happen again. And I, and, 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 and I, and I, when she approached me, I told her, this is a solution. Okay? If, if this brother got stopped because his pants were sagging, ended up dead, that's, that's bad, there should be a remedy to that, to that issue. And, and I said, I can support you on that fact alone, that if a man was, was, was sagging and it drew the attention of law enforcement and he ended up dead, that's, that's not a good thing. That's not a good thing. But I'm still saying that the issues that we have to face is beyond what we're gonna be voting on on Tuesday. Serious issues. And it doesn't affect me personally because I'm retired, but I, I have, I have been an issue-oriented person, starting with creating solutions and remedies to the issues that face my community over the years. I didn't just show up here yesterday and start talking about council people. I took, I took a active role in changing and bettering my community. And that's what I said when I said on this Facebook page that this gentleman said, that you can't wait for government to solve all of our problems. Citizens has to take, take a responsibility and a role, mentoring somebody, creating a Boy Scout or Girl Scout troop, doing something in the community to help deter some of these, these ills that, that we are facing. We can't wait for government to address all these things, and government won't do it. And I'm just saying that, thank you for the approaches you've taken, and I still told you, and I'd say it again, that if the previous two black mayors would have taken the aggressive stand that you have to try to be economically involved, then that battle would've been fought 12, 15 years ago. But yet, we find ourselves here, and it's, it's gonna be a real, real, real major concern and issue to move beyond what we're facing and what we are receiving from both communities, both communities. I have never seen this community this, this divided since, since the 60s. Hopefully, we can resolve it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, please.
Well, Councilman Bradford about to leave, but I got Councilman Butcher. Would you, at your job, would you hire somebody that came in sagging? Or do you enforce the rule at work?
Mr. Chairman, my daddy, my daddy, what?
I just asked a question, I'm trying to-
Let me, let me give an example. My daddy, when I was 18 years old, I grew this big old bush, big old afro. In 1969, that wasn't too popular, and my daddy said, if you're gonna get a gainful employment, I would ask that you cut your hair. And the reason he said that was, he said, until people know what's in your head, they wouldn't care what's on your head. And I'm saying that if you want an opportunity, I wouldn't care how you wear your pants if I knew that you had a value within your personality.
So, you, so you hired and you don't enforce the rule at your job, right?
Mr. Chairman, if you showed up at my job with sagging pants, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't clock in.
Okay.
You couldn't clock in.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Butcher?
Okay, it's really, I, I got a couple of things I wanna say, but the first thing I wanna say is, it's really odd that, that I'm a, I'm a white Republican from South Shreveport, Councilman Bradford is African-American from MLK area, but you know what? My granddaddy told me the same thing that his granddaddy told, or his daddy told him. It's all, you know, it's about your appearance, but as a Republican, and this is gonna shock some people probably when I say this, I'm not here to legislate the way you wear your clothes. I mean, that's, that's not what I'm here to do. I can't legislate morality, I can't legislate what color you paint your house or, or anything like that. I'm concerned about the legislation to a certain extent because I wanna make sure that the administration is comfortable with what we're doing. Mayor, what, what's your take on that? What, what, where, where does the administration fall on repealing this?
We support it.
Okay, so you support repealing?
Yeah, we supported the majority. Yes, and we've had conversations with multiple council members about it, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm gonna be, I mean, and being frank, I just, I just saw the numbers yesterday, you know, as Councilman Bradford pointed out about, you know, his agenda for the community, and I've talked about equitable growth from my inauguration speech to living rooms in your district, living rooms in each and every one of your districts, and everybody was on board with it, and I'd never thought about the sagging pants, and I was, I was pretty taken aback when I saw the numbers the other day for the arrest of African-Americans, so we, I support it.
Well, I, I, I wasn't privy to that conversation, so that's why I ask. I, I didn't know that y'all, you had discussed it with other council members. I, I wanna know what your take on it is because you're the one that's gonna have to enforce your employees if they do it or they don't do it, so.
Well, if it's in the law, if you pass the law, then the SPD will adhere to the law.
Right, well, I know that, I know that, but I wanna hear what your take on it was. On, on the, on the flip side of that, I, I do feel like that we have a lot of big fish that we need to fry, and I agree with, with Councilman Bradford that, that this is a start, and we got a two-week debate going on about this, and I think it's great that we're hearing a lot of people talking about it on Facebook and giving us input, and maybe this input will lead to better decisions being made down the road on several different aspects of it. But I, I just, I, I wanted to say that, to me, I, I don't feel like that it's, it's my job to sit up here and legislate the way that you should wear your pants, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. I'm sad that Councilman Bradford had to leave because I wanted to address a couple of things that he brought up. The first being, with all the issues we have, that this would be something that would be taking up so much space, well, when you have even the hint that someone might have been killed as a result of being stopped for something as banal as this, yeah, it's gonna take some attention, but I will say to you all, like I've said to the media, we can multitask. We're researching and we are working on legislation to, to, to deal with several different things that are going on that are affecting our community right now. Multitasking on those types of things is not a problem. In fact, I think that people spend a lot more energy typing about it and being, and being critical of what I've put forth than I did picking up the phone and asking, can we draft legislation to repeal this? That's the first thing. The next thing is citizens taking a role. This is citizens taking a role. That's what this looks like. This is citizens taking a role and holding us accountable for the things that they wanna see change in our community. And I'm, I'm appreciating you being here for it, and I hope you continue to show up for other issues, because this is just one thing. And I wish that we had this much fire on other issues that come up that should be making people sick to their stomach, too, especially when we talk about things like our fiscal responsibility and our infrastructure, because one of the huge places of disparity that we have is the way that we deploy our resources for infrastructure across the city. But we've got, we've got a little bit of time to talk about that, too, in the next couple of months. As far as would I hire? No, I wouldn't. I wouldn't hire, I wouldn't give you the application if you came in looking that way when you came to get the job. And more than that, if I own the boutique or the restaurant that you're entering in the saggy pants, it's my private property, I reserve the right to refuse your service. And more to that, if you refuse to leave, I can call the police because you're trespassing. What I'm getting at is that we already have laws to, that, that impact these things. We have laws about indecency or indecent exposure already. We didn't need an additional, additional one focusing just on one type of issue beyond I've spoken to a lot of people in the minority community that are worried about that specific thing as far as their businesses and feel like they won't have the support they need, but that's the thing, is if you're trespassing, you're trespassing. If a person's not welcome, they're not welcome. But beyond that, we cannot, we should not be legislating morality. We have a social contract, we have norms in our communities, and one of those norms is just the consequence of your actions, of being ostracized just to your group because other people don't wanna associate with you because of the way that you act, because you're demonstrating that you don't make good choices. But as long as we're not legislating on a motorcycle jacket or a face piercing, we don't need to legislate this. If you wanna walk down the street in your shorts, your shorty shorts, as long as everything is covered, be my guest, I hope you're buff, because people are gonna talk about you. But I know how to close my blinds. I might question your mental health if that's a choice you wanna make, but it's your choice. And if a guy can run down the street in a speedo, or if a woman can pump gas in her bikini, then why can't these young men make their bad choices without fear of being profiled and stopped and frisked? If we wanna stop and frisk, then just say that. Go ahead and be open about it. Just say that you wanna stop and frisk law, and then we can talk about that, too, but don't back-end around about it. Yeah, this is important right now, and we're covering those other things, too, and thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Councilwoman Fuller. Councilman Nichols?
Mr. Chairman, as I have expressed to Councilwoman Fuller privately, I do not believe that the government should be in the business of prohibiting poor fashion choices. I don't think that's a prudent use of our resources, and it, it can lead to many of the problems that we've discussed here today. For that reason, I intend to support her legislation. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, would you proceed with ordinance on second reading of final consensus?
Ordinance 44, amending the city of Shreveport, Louisiana, 2019 general fund budget. Ordinance 58, rescinding ordinances 33 of 2009, 54 of 2011, and 136 of 2013, and removing vehicular flow restrictions on Baker Street, Fannin Street, and North Street in Section 37. Ordinance 59, to create and establish a no-through truck route on Mackey Lane between Jewella Avenue and Walker Road pursuant to Section 90-123 and Section 90-124 of the Code of Ordinances. Ordinance 60, creating a stop intersections in the Lucian Field Estates within the city limits of the city of Shreveport. Ordinance 61, amending the 2019 Riverfront Development Fund budget. Ordinance 62 is owning case 19-300-C- Ordinance sixty-two, is zoning case nineteen dash three hundred dash C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located between Fourth Street and Crestwall Avenue approximately four-hundred-and-twenty-five feet northeast of Marshall Street, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from I MU Industrial Mixed Use District to I Two Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance sixty-three, zoning case nineteen three oh three C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the northwest corner of Greenwood Road and Danny R. Wimberly Road, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from C Three General Commercial District to C Four Heavy Commercial District. Ordinance sixty-four, zoning case nineteen dash three oh five C, and ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Lynnwood Avenue and West Sixty-third Street, Shreveport Caddo Parish, Louisiana, from R One Five Single Family Residential District to I One Light Industrial District. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention again, ordinance number fifty-eight, and, uh, the administration will be asking to postpone, and ordinance sixty-one, the administration would like to remove from the agenda.
To remove sixty-one?
Remove sixty-one.
All right. Mr. Thompson, we have any table legislation, any other table legislation to be removed?
Uh, I'm not aware of any. We have one item, and I have not received any correspondence or comments about it.
Okay. And ordinance twenty-six of nineteen?
That's a deputy chief, dude?
Okay. All right. We have no other appeals, no property standards appeals to be considered today?
No, sir.
All right. No other appeals, Mr. Thompson? Do we have any reports from officers, boards, or committees? Seeing none. Mr. Thompson, is that correct report?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we've received, uh, several appointments from the mayor for the Metropolitan Planning Commission, Windsor Andrews for a five-year term, Assistant City Attorneys, Courtney N. Harris, and Alonso P. Jackson, Jr. And, uh, today we received an appointment to the Shreveport Airport Authority, really it's a reappointment, of Grant Knuckles for a five-year term. And, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as I think all of the council members know, know, today was Karen Strand's last day as the Assistant City Attorney representing the council. Our new attorney, as I understand it, uh, is Dani, Danielle Farr Irving. Uh, I don't think she's been officially introduced, so I wanted to introduce her today and to let all council members know that she's here to assist you. Uh, she's experienced, uh, she's done a good job, and she'll do a good job for the council, and we're glad to have her.
So is it Irving? Because I've still been calling her Ms. Farr, so I apologize for that.
It's Farr Ewing now.
Okay, okay.
She just got married.
Okay, all right, Ewing. Farr Ewing, I got it. All right.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If no one else has anything, let's meet in this adjournment.